...
Well, be careful.
Well, be careful.
Well, be careful.
Probably first one five two.
Friday.
Thursday, we're doing it Thursday afternoon. Now, now richer. Just a little early.
Four lakes, one or the other.
It's a faulty catcher.
Let's go ahead and complementing order. This is a regular council meeting in the last meeting of the year. Thursday, December the fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. If you would, please stand while we place a meeting to the flag and remain standing for the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand up if you might have a question, please.
Let us pray. May your sake be praised once again and come to your purpose, as it should be one of the best. Father, we ask that you bless our beloved present and our son and daughter and their sons. Father, you bless souls who are devout and you continue to give us travel, grace, and mercy. And Father, as we go into a new year, we ask that you continue to bless us, continue to let us be good leaders of this city and bless the new leadership that's coming on board, Father. Let them be God and let them be leaders as you have them to be. And we ask that you bless this meeting, let it go in the direction that you have it to go, let us be orderly, and let us do thy will and thy service in the matters in which let all that we say and do.
I'd like to welcome all our guests to this room tonight, and I will entertain a motion to approve the current agenda. That motion in a second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor saying aye, opposed no. All members voting for the motion. This time, we will have our ten-minute public input period. And first person, we have Mr. Kristen Jones.
Hi, I'm Kristen Jones. I live in the subdivision of Hill Crest Bridge, and I am here over concern for water. A year ago, our family four, excuse me, paid forty dollars for water in sewer. Today, that amount has doubled, crippling many families with bills well over one hundred dollars. In May, this council approved a rate increase sixty percent, forty percent to our sewer, twenty percent for water, without properly informing residents. We laid aside in April, and were unaware of this economy increase. We incurred bills in June and July of three hundred dollars per month. Now, this is retrospective, and things should have been different. Yet, here we are today, and I would like to give you a personal account of how we went. So hopefully, you will listen and that you will see the families that make less than us of fifty thousand dollars, what they were having to endure. I am a stay-at-home mom, my husband a teacher. It is my sole responsibility to this family that I create financial margin, and I am deeply committed to our budget and staying out of debt, we have no credit cards. Since this economic downturn, I have cut off that from our budget. I resort to cloth diapering, which requires more laundry, gardening to can our own food, which we share with neighbors, and also cutting back on electricity and gas, which is uncomfortable in our house at times. In summer, we use water sprinklers to keep the kids cool. In order to keep our finances solvent, I now force this winter to stop flushing toilets. These two Home Depot buckets are what I use to collect the water from our showers in order to flush a couple times a day. This also means we can do a small load of wash. This summer, I will be unable to irrigate or garden, which saddens me deeply, since I will not be able to can as previously. In my research to get to the bottom of why we pay so much in comparison to those a mile away from us in Cherokee County on sewer, I have uncovered some information. And the reservoir is probably, as you know, the biggest factor. It's an unsustainable debt of twenty million dollars the backs of these can residents cannot afford, and young children cannot afford. My question to this council and mayor is what are you willing to cut back? What are you willing to sacrifice to help our families scrape the bank? We in the community want to help, we want to be involved. I'm in contact with a couple of HOA presidents in our community, and we want to help be part of the solution. And in summary, the average American family of four uses twelve thousand units of water, three thousand per individual. This amount translates to a hundred and forty dollars for water in sewer for a family of four. With water rates set to go up and up and up, in the mayor's words, when will the council act, stop playing politics, and help the city, the citizens? The sewer was built in nineteen fifty-nine, and there will be costly upgrades, I'm sure. And so we ask you to look at Woodstock and Holly Springs progression in helping can become solvent once again. I thank you, and I hope this is just the end.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Mayor?
Yes?
How? Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
I'm for selling the reservoir, getting the reservoir out of here, and I'll do my best to take care of that. I realize that it's not twenty million, it's thirty million, and we need to get rid of it. So I appreciate you stepping forward and saying something about it, because we sure will try our best to offload it.
Thank you very much. Actually, that's the only, I don't only, I'm beginning to... Before we, before we begin our consent agenda, I wanted to make a statement. Something has been in the news recently, I guess, and so it's not really something that I think we need to discuss thoroughly or anything, I think it's something that is logical and reasonable, so let me make this statement. Since our last council meeting, everyone of us know of the tragic event that occurred in our city over the weekend beginning December the second. As a result of the action of our police department, the sheriff's department, the GBI, and the FBI, an arrest was made within a matter of a few days. All of these agencies are to be congratulated for their efforts. I have personally spoken to our police chief Jeff Lance, Sheriff Roger Garrison, and GBI Director Vernon Keenan to express gratitude on behalf of our city for their efforts and the efforts of their law enforcement officers in this case. In just the past few days, some concern has been expressed as to how the investigation was conducted on behalf of our police department. To better understand how the investigation was conducted and determine the facts regarding the investigation, it is my opinion that a review of the activities and operations of our police department as it relates to this case is in order. The city manager and I have discussed this, and we have concluded that he should secure a third-party, unbiased professional to review the procedures followed in this case by our police department and report back to our city manager areas where our department did well and any areas that the department did not do so well. The purpose of this review is to learn from any shortcomings and to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our department, and for no other reason for any future criminal investigations that one may have. So, Mr. Wood will be working toward that goal in the next few days, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd just like to say I want to thank you, city manager, and also Chief Lance, because he is in on the conversation and he supports your program. So it's something that we need to get done as soon as possible, so thank you.
On our consent agenda, there are a number of items which you have before you. The ordinance allowing Sunday package sales, our second reading. Cemetery ordinance, the second reading. Decision on residential plan review fees. Decision on the bids for the photovoltaic power system at the police department and the October financials. Are there any of those items that we need to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Let me point out, Mayor, as a reminder, please, that the bid on the photovoltaic power system will be a provisional or conditional bid award. We have not yet been notified that the patent office has not, by the state, that we have received that accommodated grant, so you're approving the bid but subject to our receipt of the confirmation of the award, the grant.
Any items need to be removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Have motion in a second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify saying aye, opposed no. All members voting for the motion. In your agenda package, you also have the minutes of December the first for your approval. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of December the first, two thousand and eleven. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify saying aye, opposed no. All members voting for the motion. Under old business, the discussion of the contract with the Bio Systems, Mr. Dyer, city attorney indicated that we had not, that they had not gotten back with him at this time to provide additional...
I have sent them a version of the contract, I haven't heard back from them, so your options are to table it, or you can approve it, subject to appropriate contract being assigned.
Sir, have motion in a second, and we table discussion on the contract for Bio Systems? Until the work session in January.
Okay, I'm still, I'm still waiting for the literature. Go ahead, I want to see some sort of documentation.
I believe Mr. Woodland is going to provide some additional stuff, but he was out of town as of late as afternoon. Apparently, it's either going to be later, we may not make this meeting. This is going to be a short meeting, so we don't have to hurry. The next, the next item, did we vote on that? We didn't vote on that yet, did we?
We did.
Those in favor signify saying aye, opposed no. All members voting for the motion to be tabled until our work session in January. The discussion of the decision on the bids for the demolition of the House of One Forty, Ajaris Street. I believe at the last meeting, we agreed to go ahead with the review for any asbestos. Joby, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting?
Yes.
Are we voting on that this time, or is that already underway?
We do have the asbestos survey back.
We did, okay.
It did not come back in time to get it on the agenda with this thing as a...
Mayor, council, we, the final bid for the asbestos surveillance was what we were lacking, what came in at sixty-nine fifty, which our previous low bidder had estimated five thousand, which we had seen on average for what they estimate for a house of that age, and came in a little higher due to some excessive contaminated groundworm and some anxiety. And I would let you know that with this survey back and the quote, it's the total quote for the demolition is sixteen twenty-five.
How does that relate to the other bids that we had as far as the total of the first two parameters went?
It's, it's definitely below the low bidder.
It's still lower, even though someone been actually bid on the asbestos removal?
That's exactly right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wes, I just want to let you know that we did have a copy of that information in our package,
of the updated material.
And the still low bidder was known contracted, and they were the same individuals that did task one.
Yes, ma'am.
That did, it's still the low bid for the asbestos, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you want to make a motion? Is it approved? For the bid?
Have motion, second, any other discussion, questions? If not, those in favor signify saying aye, opposed no. All members voting for the motion.
Mayor, could I please point out to council that this simply raises the structure. There still will be some additional storm surfer work, and necessary, we'll be developing those bid specs and bringing that back to you. This simply removes the structure.
The next item under, under new business, discussion of the fees for Sunday sales. I've spoken with the city manager, I've spoken with a number of you as well, I think, and it would be my recommendation that we not have any additional fees this year on the Sunday sales, and that a review of our overall license fees for alcohol, both package sales as well as poison licenses, be reviewed and compared with it before licensing time next year. Because we have already, licenses have already been gone out this year at a certain fee, you know? Those have been paid, and we certainly need to, in my opinion, don't need to add another fee to take them back in and do that. My understanding is they will be required, if I'm correct, to come in and get a permit at this time for Sunday active sales, is that correct?
I think we have to do that, excuse me, we're going to have to do that this year. Next year, we can do otherwise.
Combine it all into one for the licensing next time.
Does that need a motion?
If there's a motion, that there be no fee.
Okay. Make the motion no fees.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. The acceptance of Belfray LLC property donation, deed of gift. Certainly, we will need a motion to approve that deed of gift.
If I could explain a little bit, because the motion needs to be a little more specific than that. Property description that's included in the deed that I presented to the clerk will change. There's three tax parcels, they have to retain one to make the deal, the tax part, or the tax credit part. We will be getting two contiguous pieces of a total of about twenty acres. They wanted to hold out the one that we wrapped around, and I said, well, why can't we hold out the other one? Give us the ones that are contiguous and they agree to do that, so.
So that's the one up in the back?
There's one across the road from our forty acres, and there's two more. The thing that you have in front of you, we would be getting one across the road in the eighteen acres, but not the... And that didn't make any sense, so the property description will change. They're trying to do it this year.
So it needs to be altered then?
Yes. And all were really good, the question that come up about what kind of restrictions we're going to have, that's what you approve, that you will accept the donation with those restrictions, which allow you to do any kind of passive recreational use and construct parking lots and bathrooms as you.
Do you see any issue by not having what we're voting on defined? Or you're saying you're okay with it, and you know what's defined, or you just want to vote?
It is defined, and I'm okay with it.
Okay.
You don't see the downside to this, I guess? All right.
Unless you just don't want on property. If nothing else, it could be just open space.
The next item?
And if the motion could just be, if I can state the... You asked a question, but the motion will be to accept property donation from Belfray with the restrictions as set forth.
Sir, have motion in a second for the acceptance of the Belfray property donation. Any other discussion, questions? If not, those in favor signify saying aye, opposed no.
And that was really just to announce to you that back in April, you approved the purchase of a mitigation easement and substitution of the properties we acquired up on Shoal Creek. You know, let's get that closed today. So we have now substituted that property, that's been approved by the corporate engineers. We'll be able to release that property we were contending on Shoal Creek.
Is that the last property that we needed?
We still accord on some, but we don't have to acquire any others.
Okay. Is this referral in action?
No, that's really just an announcement.
I would, I would go back, I don't know, Jack, if you have anything, we kind of jumped over the Bio Systems contract. Bobby had not gotten any information back relative to that, so we actually, what we actually did was table it until the next meeting.
Well, I apologize, me and Lydia, going about four hundred miles, but I couldn't get in the traffic. I was fine until I got five seventy-five. and I was fine until I got five seventy-five. But when I talked with them, they said they had signed it and sent back, but I didn't...
Not to me.
Okay. Let me do the checking. That's all I know.
Okay. Well, we moved to the work session again.
Okay.
Again, I just want to say I ask for brochure, flyer, some material.
City manager's report?
I'll update the mayor council on several things. On the city hall roof project, Mr. Patton and Mr. Crosby are largely overseeing that from a city standpoint, but they are reporting that the contractor started work on the clay tile portion of the roof of December the ninth, beginning with the east side portion of the gable roof. The contractor's cleaning and removing the clay tiles, replacing the damaged and rotting wood deck, and installing new leak barrier and shegel-made asphalt underlayment, and then reinstalling tiles. They're working on, currently working on the west side portion of the gable roof, which would be the area over us, with the same type of cleaning and removing and replacement steps. When the work gets to the south side portion of the gable roof, which will be the area over the drive-through window, we will probably need to suspend use of that window. We'll probably give adequate notice, but the use of that drive-through window will be, will become necessary.
Just a little?
Yes, sir.
Is it running pretty good on schedule then?
So far, yes, sir.
So we've had some great days.
Yes, sir. And they're working, they're using this time, I hope, I hope not, but yes, sir. Too early yet to be too late in the schedule, but they're on top of it at this point. And the reports I get from Mr. Patton are that we made a wise decision in retaining Raymond Engineering as a project manager, that it has already paid some dividends for the city in terms of project oversight. Mayor Hoggood and I met today with the county manager and one of the county elected officials to basically get an update on where we were with respect to the possibility of relocating the baseball fields to the Univer site. We do have some, nothing was concluded, of course, but we do have some layouts that we would like for all of mayor council and for our newly-elected council members, incoming council members to look at. Those are in the library, and if you'll just give the mayor or me one a heads up, we'll be glad to sort of interview informally on what we've learned today. The goal is, once a consensus is achieved by mayor council, to communicate in a formal fashion that concurrence to the county, so that we think and do forward with refining those plans and then going out to bid. That project is still a long way off from... Monday for Christmas holidays, property tax collections. I'm sorry, I did have a printout on that, and I must have left it on my desk, but that is, that is progression as well. Linda McKinnon and some contract support staff have been doing a good job on property tax collections. I enjoyed a ripe, interesting, and helpful, two-way orientation for and with Mr. Huffman and Mr. Cummings. And I know all of them, they've already attended a lot of city council meetings, and we know a lot about what's going on in the city. I hope it was helpful to them, and I certainly look forward to working with them. Ms. Tanner and Ms. Rose, during the two years I've worked with them, have exemplified to me the epitome of people who genuinely love this city and are true public servants, and at least from my standpoint, I certainly appreciate their leadership and support, and they will be missed.
Under the mayor's report, I have discussion of sewer charges for One Forty Carter. It came to my attention recently from an individual in our water down, paying the water down of Water Department, that they were paying for sewer. This is the, basically, this particular location is up State Route One Forty toward Ole Skans. This particular parcel was like the old Pasadena restaurant, and I think it's being utilized as a church now. But the person questioned why they were paying sewer on that particular building. Well, we have an ordinance that says if you're within a certain number of feet of a sewer line, you know, you're supposed to be paid for sewer charges. It seems from the information that we've been able to obtain that they are within, for instance, the proper footage in order to pay sewer. However, the sewer line is on the opposite side of State Route One Forty. So I guess I would like to ask if maybe our city attorney could take a look at our ordinance to see if, how it addresses this as to, you know, we certainly don't want to spend thirty or fifty thousand dollars borrowing under State Route One Forty just so we collect one or two people's sewer charges, you know? I mean, it'd be very, very expensive to borrow under State Route One Forty. So the question that I have is, and is that how does our ordinance address this adequately, or do we need to do anything else? And I'd just like to ask that we authorize the city attorney to take a look at that? And I have no idea how many people may be affected in similar situations there, where our cost to get them sewer, I mean, they have their own safety tank already. I mean, they have no problem, they're very happy like they are, but they're being charged, this was close to a hundred dollars a month just for the sewer. And so my opinion is they really don't need to be paying that unless we can allow it under there that makes it convenient and available at their site, you know? So anyway, would you, you mind taking a look at that?
I'd love to. I should just add to that, it seems to me, that's what our ordinance says, if they decide that want to come in and pay for a sewer tap, whatever the sewer tap costs, a couple thousand dollars, here we are, we got to borrow under the red date hour.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. And we don't want to do that now, not at this time. Okay. That's really all we have on the agenda, but I would like to recognize Ms. Tanner too and Ms. Rose, but she's not here. Ms. Tanner has served the past eight years. City owes her a deal of gratitude. We appreciate the work that she has done on this council and for the eight years. Ms. Rose, I understand, has served twenty-two years. I actually thought it was a little less than that, but I understand it's been twenty-two years, and as far as I know, I don't know anyone that's served longer. Does anybody here know anyone that may have served longer than that? So they need to be recognized, and we certainly appreciate their service and their input and what they've meant to this city over those past years. Thank you. Okay. Do you motion to adjourn?
Sir.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, I'll lose the way to say aye.